Call the meeting in order whenever you stand for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is it, do you take your role, please?
Butler?
Here.
Jordan? Oakbridge? Smith?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Thrash?
Here.
Vincenzo?
Here.
Five members present, two absent.
Okay, I was notified by the two members that are not present that they would be unable to attend this evening. So we have five members here. The purpose of this meeting special is the council to make a decision whether or not they want to continue with the project for Edinburgh Way, if they want to consider it an emergency. My understanding, someone please correct me if I'm wrong, we cannot pass this as an emergency unless we have at least five members present. The reason for this meeting was we could have five, but on Monday night at the regular meeting, there will only be four, so it can't be passed then. The next meeting after that would put us entirely past the starting deadline.
I think one of the start the week of the 13th.
And we'd be in, but be able to, so they're not going to start the project unless the money's approved. I don't even know when they could get us back on the schedule. They would have to possibly take us off the schedule.
They would have to take us off, possibly get us back in September, maybe.
So it's a possibility that this project won't be done until late in the year if it is back on their schedule at all, if it's not passed this evening. The legislation for this has been sent out. My understanding is, I know it's a lot of money, but I don't think, if I understand, I made several talks with Jeremy, this street cannot be just paved. It has to be completely redone because the base is shot. Even if we come in later and just pave this street in a year, maybe two years, it's going to look just like this. So basically, as I understand it, we may not get this thing done this year at all. Then we face possibility of major price increases again, who knows? We're already looking at some of those.
Yes, it's already incorporated in there.
So it's basically, give everybody an opportunity to ask Jeremy any questions that they want to ask him to make a decision, whether or not they want to consider actually passing this as an emergency. If anyone is not on board with passing this as an emergency tonight, there's no sense even reading the resolutions because they're not going to be any good. So at this point in time, I'm going to give everybody an opportunity if they have any questions for Jeremy and kind of kick it around a discussion between council and decide if they in fact want to pursue this project, if they're willing to pass it as an emergency meeting or an emergency legislation this evening. So at this time, Jeremy, anything you want to say to start with?
No, most of what was, the history went over with council in the email that was sent out describing the issues and what had happened. Basically, when the contractor met with us at the beginning of the year to reprice this, to look at some of the stuff because of the waterline project, the amount and the breadth of that project that changed so much, I told him to include Edinburgh and Kilcythe. When he sent me the information and I got it, got the numbers, apparently there was a disconnect and it says on here, it's North Market to Kilcythe. I asked him about it, he said, no, it's included. And then after I came to council that night and said, yes, it's the two streets for that money, I called him the next day, say, yes, council wants to move forward, what's the schedule? And then he said, oh, no, Kilcythe's not included, that's going to be another 145,000. And that's when I went, oh shit.
What is the cost per ton now?
He didn't, he didn't break it down in there. What I've got though, I've got the mint for, let me see here, hang on a second. He didn't break it down by cost per ton, he broke it down by what he's doing with depth and everything. So Edinburgh, what it would be was excavate existing pavement 12 inches in depth, install stabilization fabric, install six inches of number one, number two limestone base, construct two inch limestone aggregate, limestone base on top of the six inch, two and a half inches asphalt, and then an inch and a half wearing course on top of that. And that's all, that's all he broke it down with and then the total amount. But as I mentioned before, the costs are up, I mean petroleum's up, so.
The cost had to go extremely high. Because I know, I'm looking at the 2022 list and for Edinburgh Way from Market Street to Kilcythe was 282 ton.
But Donnie, don't forget, this turned into a much bigger project than what they...
Yeah, with the base.
This is the base, that was just, that was literally a topping, an inch and a half or two inch topping on that.
That wasn't, yeah.
It wasn't, it wasn't this base and the stabilization and everything else. This will fix the street the way it should have been built?
Yes.
It's just not, I mean, we could go through and just, and just take out all the stone if you guys would want, but.
That wasn't.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter because in another two years, we'd be the same situation.
Okay.
It's just the way that certain streets were built, basically right on top of clay.
Do we know how thick it is right now? I mean, you're saying the spec was six inches?
There probably, I would say, the wear course is probably about an inch, maybe an inch and a half. And what is happening is that actually a lot of that is shearing off of the base that's there. The base, it could be three inches, it could be four inches. I wouldn't expect it to be any bigger than that just because of the nature of it, it's not heavy duty asphalt, but, so I would say it's right around that same, that same neighborhood. The problem is whenever we've redone some concrete curves in there, there's no, there's no base under it, only the base that our guy says installed over the years, but it's only pieces and parts, it's not the entire breadth of everything. I mean, I can find out what the cost is, you know, per ton.
I was just curious as to.
But he didn't break it down that way, he just gave me a total.
As to compare it to other streets, you know, I'm just curious with the.
No, I know, and that's what we had before, if you look at the legislation, we had, you know, 200,000 to do all 12 of those, 13 of those areas, but we were only coming in and basically putting a topping coat on them. So this is full depth, base replacement and everything. So we should never have to worry about that street ever again.
Yeah. I can remember actually, Donnie, you maybe were a lot younger then, I remember they actually had to do that on Green Tree years ago, after they first took it in, they just totally just, but they didn't really put a base under it the way it should have. And Green Tree, base, or I'm sorry, it was Millrose and part of Green Tree, it just disintegrated. They had to come in basically and rebuild the entire street, like it wasn't there.
It was the same with the lower part of Chris Will and Wilenda as well.
Right.
Now, there's no doubt with this number where it's at, it's high. I'm, I'll, that's what I told you guys last time, the cost of petroleum is, is, it's up there.
I was just trying to get a cost of the difference.
I'll find out, but I don't have it, I don't have it with me, with, with the number she gave.
But I don't even know how you did that because we had only partial project really in 2021, where we have a full project here, you know what I mean? We didn't plan such a massive project in 2021, it was included in the list.
It was just the topping basically for all those areas.
Yeah, so it's really.
I mean, it was dressed in.
It's hard to say even, yeah.
So, I mean, it, we can compare the amounts roughly with, you know, the asphalt layers, but the stone layers and milling it all out is where a lot of this other stuff comes in.
So are we under any kind of contract then with the paving company to?
Well, and that's been the matter of debate, I mean, you guys were all sent the information. I mean, there's a, there was a 60 days from the notice to proceed for completion of the project. Now, was it completed? Obviously not, or we wouldn't be sitting here. It was kind of the default, I mean, de facto, the fact that, you know, we said, they came to us and said, we're not going to be able to get to you. I mean, what do we say? We have to say, yeah, okay, well, make us be the first one on the list. Since that time, that's when we got the $5 million dollars and our waterline project went from one street or two streets out here to, I mean, you've seen the drawings, it is everywhere, so.
But it's either we choose a street and we go forward with paving, or we deal with litigations for breaking contract.
It would be possible litigation, yeah, but chances are, we'll at least get a nasty letter from their attorney, quite possibly.
Now, here's something else that's thrown in there too. With this repricing of these things, they did give me a separate standalone price for South Marietta. What I'm waiting on on that is the determination of what we're going to do in that section from Woodrow up to Main Street with the waterlines. We're definitely coming across there and coming down the Woodrow, I just don't know if we're in the street or in the sidewalk. If we're in the sidewalk, that would be one section that we could definitely pave, it definitely needs it, I know Mark has, has been out on me for a while with it, and, and there's no doubt, it needs it. That would be money that comes from there, that was $42,000, but, and he actually told me that could be a standalone project. Because he's got a couple of other numbers in here for other streets that he suggested that need to be paired together, like, one, we've got the one section on Reservoir Road, which was part of the original one for 23-5, high street extension to the corporation line for 17-8, those two, he said, would have to be paired together. Plaza West Drive would be 96,400, and then Edinburgh was the 236 that we talked about. So, I mean, we have some options with some of those, and those are some of the streets that we kind of sat and said, okay, what, where don't we have problems in going through it? I mean, each one brings its own unique issue. I mean, the one on Marietta, there's no doubt it's done, I'm just waiting to coordinate the engineer who's waiting to get information from AT&amp;T and the gas company to see where their lines are, to see where we're going to put our waterlines.
But how long would that take? If we wait to hear back from him, then are we past the point of being able to get the paving under the contract that we're?
It could be.
You wait around, it could be, it could not be, right?
It could be September, it could be August, it could be, yes.
Yeah.
I know, and that's, that's where we're at. Hence why we're having a special meeting, because he called and said, oh yeah, we, I got you on the schedule for 13th, and I went, okay, well, we got one meeting between then, I can have that. And then when we found out that there was going to be three people absent, I need, yeah, three, I need five for emergency legislation. So that's why we're here tonight discussing.
This was actually, I think, the only night this week that we could have got five people here. So it's, it's either we.
I mean, it's just like I said before, none of this is ideal, but it, it's kind of a good problem to have that the state threw $5 million dollars in a lapse, so, you know, we gotta make a decision either way. I mean, the costs are up, no doubt about it. I mean, I wouldn't have thought that that came in for that. That's why I was thinking it was the two streets, but.
I don't have any high hopes that they won't be the same or even more come next year.
Uh, next year, we're going to hopefully be knee deep into waterlines and everything else, so the fact, but, you know, I do hold out hope that eventually the cost will drop down.
Right.
I mean, look, when I moved back here in 2003, we were paying $4 and $5 a gallon for gas then, and it dropped. It may take a wa, a year or two.
But like I told you too, when we go to pass the budget and we allot the 200,000, and then we find out that a project is going to cost much more than what we originally thought it would, but we haven't spent anything in two, three years? Two, three? We haven't used anything that we've allotted in the past two years, so now we're on year three.
Now, I can't say the first year, I can only say for the last year, because that was the only year I was involved in the budget, and I know you were.
Well, the year before.
The first, 2020, the budget was already done.
That was COVID, there was nothing being done anyway.
It was, but it could be done, but we were operating on someone else's budget.
Right.
I never, I didn't start here until the end of August, September.
I'm just saying, I know it's more than what we would plan on, but I think to consider, you know, financially, we haven't spent anything in the past few years on paving, so we spend a little bit extra, then we get to this waterline project, and then we, you know, go back into the lists of streets that are done and safe and, and good to go, that we can really start moving into.
No, I know, and that's kind of the intent with the waterline is that, because once we go through, I showed you the details.
Correct.
We're going to have trenches.
Right.
Now, they're going to be paved over and everything, but when you look at the street, it's going to be a trench, there's going to be a 24 or an 18 inch trench in some of these areas.
Right.
These alleys here, right here, are main ones where our waterlines are in the back. You take a 24 inch section out of that street out, there's almost nothing left, so that entire alley is going to have to be repaved. It's just, it's the nature of where we're at with things. But however you guys want to handle it, I mean, that's why I said that last time, and it just sucks that, you know, it's not, if there was a misunderstanding, then the information wasn't what I thought it was and what I had asked for, but it's adapt and adjust, that's what we do.
Okay, Mike, do you have any questions you want to ask Jeremy or anything you want to bring up? I'm going to leave that one here.
Yeah, the ordinance says to solicit competitive bids, I mean, did we already do that?
That was already done.
Yes.
But that's a, isn't that a whereas in there?
That's just the heading, directing.
Oh yeah, that was just the, yeah, the heading that we just, we've been amending, we took it.
So should that be in there, I mean, where we got the bid?
It should not be in there, I sent an email out a couple hours ago, I asked the same question.
I was, I teach a class on Wednesday nights, so I did not see that.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, we just got, we just got this.
Okay. Yeah, it got sent out yesterday.
I mean, it, the heading is not right, in my opinion. I asked everybody, was I reading it wrong? But basically, we're authorizing him to solicit bids, and am I reading it right?
Right, and it's been, we can, we can take that out, I mean, I can run over to my office and get on the computer and.
Well, you would need to do that.
Take that out, so that is not an issue.
I mean, that was, they were already competitive bids.
Right.
We did that last year, that was the Caston Baker was the contact that we selected.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, in my opinion, all it needs to say is, an ordinance amending, ordinance number 2021-29, and then you can remove the next three.
Right, we took it out in the body, but didn't get it in the heading.
Okay, so she just said she can do that, there's no problem.
Yeah, I mean, we can.
If you want me to, like I said, I can run over to my office, turn on the computer.
You don't need to go make the change now, we can do it without reading that.
Right, yes.
You see what I'm saying?
Yes, you can do that, yes.
Yeah.
But we just gave. Was that what the, the original one said though? Is that why it said that?
Yeah, we just, this thing has been amended and reamended, and we did like four drafts on.
That's why there's five or six whereas is, because the amounts of cost of the system.
Well, that's another question.
So.
Yeah, we just take it out.
That's not mine.
Okay, that was one thing.
Now, wait, wait a minute, Mike. Elizabeth?
Yes.
Could you just read it without that being, even though it's written in there, or it has to be taken out?
I mean, I can, I can, we can read it as it is, and then I can replace the first page. I can run to my office and reprint it, I don't, you know.
Now, we can't read it as it is, because then that has to go into the business, we have to.
Right.
We have to amend it on its face here, you can make the change.
Basically, we just change it so it looks like section one, where we took it out and authorized Jeremy to authorize the work for such resurfacing.
You can't scratch it up and sign it over.
I mean, we could change it earlier.
Well, I can, yeah.
I'd say just don't read it, just don't read it that way, read it however, where you want it, and then we'll make the change and.
Right.
Can somebody make a motion to subject to that change? You allow to do that?
No.
I don't think you need to make a motion.
We don't need a motion.
Yes, you just change it, yes.
All I'm saying is, after the first line.
Take out and authorize, yes.
Take out the next four lines. Once you say you're amending ordinance 21, 2021.
29, yes.
It's already, that language is about, that's already in 2021.
Right, right.
So if you take out the next four lines and then just say after 29.
That's, that's fine.
And authorizing, shouldn't that?
That, that will do it, yes, and authorizing expected to not exceed 250,000.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Jacob says he can get all the computers in or stuff, he can have reprint and leave that out right now.
That's fine, yes.
So he doesn't have to go anywhere, we'll just take it up right now.
Just keep doing your questions.
Not my turn. Oh, it's your turn. Okay, Mike?
Okay, on page two, the second whereas, it says Caston Baker were unable to complete said project is modified by the original bid.
As modified for the original bid price. They couldn't do that for the.
Well, didn't they have, we have a contract, I mean, if, if it's good enough for us, do we have to do it now?
The minute we decided to modify it, it allowed them to include their increased pricing.
When did we mo, why would you modify that?
Because we couldn't do the whole list of streets.
We changed it to the base, so instead of going to 12 different or 13 different areas, we changed it to one street, which we thought was two streets, and changed it to where the specs are, we're adding in the base.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can bicker back and forth on it with them, but in, at the end, I know that they added the price in there, and they're not going to.
Okay, because I'm not sure I'm a yes yet, that's why I'm asking, if, if we legally have to do it, it's not even a question, I say we got to do it.
And that's the, that's the back and forth with it too, I mean, you guys were all sent to contract, the notice to proceed was issued, what, October 4th?
Fourth.
And they had 60 days to complete it. It should have been completed, it wasn't. They came to us and said, we can't do this. I mean, what are we going to say? We had the chance to, to cancel the contract then and go through it and say, okay, we're done, but obviously, we still wanted to do the paving, so that's why we said, well, we'll just roll to next year, you put us first in line, which didn't happen, but, and in the meantime, is when we got the $5 million dollars, and it went, oh crap, you know, we're going to be tearing up all of these streets, we shouldn't be paving some of these streets. And there were three on the list for sure, that were there that are going to be totally obliterated because they're smaller streets.
Okay, then my next question is, like, what do you recommend?
I, per the last meeting, I said, I don't think we should pave at all.
Okay, if we don't, if, what's the if we don't scenario? Besides the legalities of them maybe?
We risked the, the bringing, being brought into a lawsuit with canceled contract, but we could have.
I doubt they're going to seek specific performance because of.
Yes.
They canceled last year, so we can finish it, we can, you know.
I mean, but there's always the risk.
Would they go for damages? Yeah.
I mean, but we could go counter back that they didn't finish when they were supposed to. I'm not trying to piss them off, I had a candid conversation with the contractor and said, look, if we wouldn't have gotten this money, we would have just moved forward. Here it is, we just would have paved what we had. I said, I'm trying to get it to where we have something to do, but with this cost, the cost escalation of petroleum and everything, I mean, that's something that shouldn't be, it shouldn't be that high, normally wouldn't be that high, but it's what we're dealing with now.
And if, if we didn't do it, the people in Edinburgh, it's just going to get that much worse. I mean, is the cost of paving that street ever going to get more than it is? Like, next year, it's still going to cost.
It could, it's, it's, it's a gamble, it could get lower.
That's what I was trying to say.
It could get lower, it could get higher.
You're going to put 236 or nine on top of an entire list of paving next year? That's going to be massive.
Well, but what I'm saying hypothetically, is it going to cost that much more? You're thinking petroleum's going to come down, it's not going to cost that much more to.
I don't know.
Okay.
That's the problem.
Gravel and all that.
That's the problem, that's the outlier there.
Because this is worst case, this is worst case scenario right now, you got to tear the whole thing out, right?
Yes, and, and that's the way to properly fix that, what it needs to do.
And I agree, I agree, don't half ass do it and then find that you've got the same mess in a year or two. But next year, if we had to tear it all out again, I mean, you're betting maybe petroleum comes down, what about the price of gravel, what about labor, what about all that?
That shouldn't mean, I mean, that, that, that always increases, that, that never goes lower. But the main thrust of all of this, this increase is.
Is the asphalt.
Is the asphalt.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, you know, when you got $5 a gallon for gasoline, I mean, the, all of it goes up, which is a whole market in itself, but.
Yeah, I don't think anybody has a crystal ball, it's going to.
Yes, I mean, and, and that's, that's the risk we take with that.
And even if it does come down slightly or however much, you're still looking at a $200,000 project, which you would put on top of an additional 200,000 at least to tackle however many streets next year, so then we're looking at over 400,000.
Yes.
As opposed to 200 and whatever the set price is for this right here. It's, I just feel, it's, to me, it's logical to at least separate and take on this project and do some paving on a safe street.
And that's fine, that's why I asked for council's opinion last meeting. I mean, I gave my opinion, but, you know, I'm, I'm asking for council too, here, I mean, give me your input on this stuff. If, if council wishes to go, that's why we're meeting tonight. I have no problem, we'll set it up, go. I mean, it, it, it's a risk, it's just like anything else.
So what's your reasoning for, for not doing it?
For not doing it, basically, I think it's, the cost is too much.
I feel that way too, but Tara makes a good point about.
I know.
I mean.
But that's why I'm trying to discuss it with all of you guys and go, okay.
Yeah, I don't know what.
What you guys want to do with this.
It's not going to turn into any less of a project next year, you know what I mean? It's still going to stand alone as this in-depth project, you know, that it turned into from last year.
To fix it correctly, yes, it needs to be down to the base.
So our estimate for last year is not going to go back to that, and this isn't just due to inflation or costs or, you know, materials or things, this is because it's a different project than what we perceived it to look like.
Yes, listen, no, but.
It added additional.
It added additional because of the scope change, but the cost of petroleum is what drives it.
Can't see this going under 200,000, if you want to knock 30,000 or something.
If, if I was doing a budget on something like this, I would have budgeted that for probably 190, 200.
Okay, so.
I mean, now, but that's the thing, that's where we're flipping the coin.
And if it goes up, say it doesn't come down, if it goes up next year, instead of budgeting for over four, just, just round it up, 450, right, for a paving budget next year, all of a sudden, we have to budget for six, because.
No, I agree.
Cost of everything goes up. I, I feel like it's a big gamble, and then not to mention the possibility of us being stuck in a contract. Why would we waste money legally if we do have a project to do that is a safe street to do, rather than risk breaking a contract and having to pay some sort of legal fees or something? That's just my, that's just my practicality of the situation, that's just, just mine.
Is Caston Baker, is that Mike Baker?
I think so, yeah. I don't know if he's doing it or not.
I think, yeah.
I think he's, I mean, the president.
I didn't realize that was him.
Yeah, I mean, I'm dealing with David Lash, he's their paving guy. Caston Baker does a whole bunch of other stuff too. But, I mean, I have no problem doing it, I just think it's, it's, the, the cost is overinflated. But I can't guarantee, I can't sit here and give you 100% guarantee the price of petroleum is going to go down. So it might be, you know, here it is, here's this amount, we're going through it, and hopefully by this time next year, we've got some of the other streets done with the waterline where we can come in and look at paving them. My fear is that we might not even have to be that far yet.
Okay, one last question. Who else bid on the project?
I've got them down there.
We don't really have to use Caston Baker on our next project, if we feel like they're ripping us off.
Well, no, I mean, there was competitive bids, there was Shelly and Sands, there was another company, I've got the bids downstairs, if you want to see them. I feel I see them. I mean, but they were the ones, they were, they were 6,000 less than the next closest bidder. I straight up asked them, can you get it done? Yes. Obviously not.
Okay.
The only thing I'd say on that, too, is aside from the fact that we don't do it this year, it's up to council. If we don't do it this year, not only might it go up in price, but the street's gonna get even worse. It's not too far from turning into a gravel street right now. I mean, there's more pothole patches down there than there is pavement. And it's just gonna get, what has cost us to fix it now could be even more than that if we wait.
I mean, it's not gonna be because of the prices going up.
Streets, I mean, we're tearing everything out anyway, so the street really doesn't.
Not on Edinburgh. If we just leave it go for a year, we're not doing anything to it. He's saying the street is just progressing.
It's not gonna get more expensive if we just let it sit there.
Why wouldn't it?
It could.
Materials, costs.
Well, the material, yes, but I'm talking about the street itself can't get any worse.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, Edinburgh didn't get any worse.
But when we get to tear everything out, it's irrelevant. We're tearing everything out to the car. It's not gonna get any worse by the street, period.
It's a gamble.
Well, again, it's it's it's.
So plan a start, when you get in, when you get out, you know? You don't know.
I mean, like I said, I still got the other option with South Marietta, which needs done. That's out of another another pot of money. That's out of state money for that because it's a state route. But until I know where the direction the water lines are going. So, I mean, there's the potential to do that one for sure, even still this year. It would be the end of the year again, though. I mean, I could get on the schedule and see. If we don't do Edinburgh, we can do that one, but that's the one I'm still waiting on. The engineer to tell me whether or not we're going in the street.
And we don't know, even if we would decide tonight, we don't know if we can get the answer in time to actually fulfill the contract and have a go-through with paving, correct?
No, the the contractor, either street, he he's got us booked in for the 13th.
But if you get the wrong answer back from the people that you're waiting for an answer on, then.
Yes, I'm that's the one I'm waiting on. That's why I can't pull the trigger on that one. That's why I'm not asking you guys to 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 look at that one. Now, if you would decide yes, then instead of Edinburgh or whatever, they would put us in the 13th and go. As of right now, we're scheduled for next, not next Monday, the Monday after, but somewhere they were, we're gonna start paving unless we tell them no.
JC, you got any specific other questions?
Yeah, um, usually the bigger the project, the better the price, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's just like a building. The cost per square foot goes down, but you're paying more per building. So if you got a 10-square-foot building, you might pay $100 a square foot. But if you've got a 100-square-foot building, you might pay $5 a square foot, but you're still paying more, but the cost per square foot is usually down.
And we just gave them an open checkbook by letting them name their price on a street that didn't go out the bid, right?
No, that that one went out the bid. We changed the specs on it.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying, yeah, they got the, they got to name their price. We couldn't have other people say, hey, I'm gonna do it for this price.
Pretty much, yes, because we were trying to keep the work because of the water line and having the contract with them.
So we just gave them an open checkbook.
Kind of sort of. I mean, it it's it's within realm of where I would think it would be, but I I think it's high. I mean, and that's, you know, what we talked about before with it. But, I mean, that's also my opinion. But but that's the reality of where we're at with everything, too. I got I've got electrical transformers that should cost, you know, $15,000 and we're spending $30,000 on them.
I mean, if we look at the price of lumber, it went to $20 for a 2x4. Now it's back down, still up, but it's back down to reality. I mean, I think this is exuberated to to no end.
Are your restaurant costs back down to reality? Because mine aren't.
Something adjusted, something hasn't. Just depends on what you buy.
Can you see anymore?
Yeah. So the legal side, in your opinion, do you think we could get sued and they win, or do you think?
I can never ever predict how a lawsuit is going to go. I mean, I'd be foolish to tell you that I could predict it.
I mean, and that's the back and forth, too. I don't wanna burn a bridge with this contractor either. They're a good contractor. But this $5 million is just throwing a complete monkey wrench into everything that was planned. I mean, it's a great problem to have, but, I mean, now it's it's another problem.
A double-edged sword.
Yes, I mean, it it it's gonna allow us to 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 replace a lot of water lines really fast in the city and not have much into it. But this is something that, you know, it's, I don't wanna say it's a casualty of it, but but it kinda is.
Well, paving's the icing on the cake, and the the cake recipe has changed a lot, so why do that and then have to re-tear it up, so.
Can you see?
No more question.
Mark?
Just out of curiosity, Kilsoth, does that have to be rebuilt, or is that just?
Part of it, the cul-de-sac needs rebuilt. The center section right where Edinburgh is can just be paved.
The upper end of the township line is the one that needs rebuilt?
Yep, and that's where he was coming in and telling me 145, and I went, about choked on my my beverage at the time.
There's a, I ask because there's a part of me that thinks that that entire project needs to be bid as one. If you're gonna do Edinburgh, that piece, that piece of Kilsoth as you head up towards Johnson, which is Richland Township, that's really bad there, too. The down, down towards the cul-de-sac is not too bad, but when you get to the cul-de-sac, it's bad.
No, that brings up a whole nother issue with all of our cul-de-sacs. We've got meetings set up with trash companies because they are the the biggest culprits. And looking at our design standards for cul-de-sacs, really, really looking at doing concrete for all of them just because it holds up better in the cul-de-sacs. I mean, we gotta watch when we salt it, but, you know, it's still, you know, we're not gonna be rebuilding these things, but all of our cul-de-sacs. JC, you live on one. You know what I'm talking about. We we were just down there doing work on yours. Yeah, I mean, that's that's a whole nother issue and problem, but does it come into play with this? Yes, because, you know, do we look at putting, you know, heavy-duty asphalt in these areas? Because that's where everything spins around instead of just going straight. I mean, you look at the bike trails, it's coming to be 25 years old. It's only been paved once. Now, it had one hell of a base, but it also doesn't get any traffic. So asphalt will hold up if it's the right conditions. We just don't have the right conditions on some of these streets.
The the commitment is to rebuild a street, not pave a street. It's rebuilding. You know, the commitment has to be looked at, that at some point, that has to be done. So the question before council tonight is, do you wanna do it now, or do you wanna see down the road? If you you wanna do it later, coupled with any anything else? I mean, I tend to agree with Tara in the sense that it needs to be, I think we we bite the bullet and go forward with rebuilding this street. But you need to make a commitment. When I say you, council needs to make a commitment to look at some of the other streets in this city that need rebuilt. And the first one that comes to mind is South Sugar going up the hill to High Street, okay?
South Sugar's in the middle of the the water project.
I understand that, but regardless of that, today, before you even get to that, that street needs rebuilt. You cannot pave it any any longer. Streets like that, at some point, you're gonna have to address. Uh, they can't just, you know, that that needs, that needs ditch better, whether or not there's any, I don't think there's any catch basins till the bottom, but you never know. I don't know. But you you've gotta make, if you're gonna commit one street, then you've gotta look at in the future, in your mind, keeping that you just can't do just regular paving, whether it's 2023, 2024 and beyond. You gotta look at some of these other streets and and as as long as everyone would take that into consideration. I I I don't think at this point, in as much as the way this has turned out, it wasn't the way it was planned, that 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 at this point, if I'm forced to vote, if you will, and that's, that that I'm inclined to go ahead and do it regardless. Because I just don't, I don't see it, I don't see the cost coming down enough to warrant the wait, is my point. That's that's just the way.
Okay, very quickly, anybody have any more specific questions? Okay, uh, this might be a little unorthodox. I'd like you guys five minutes or so to just kinda discuss and learn each other and see where you're at on this, because if if we don't have, we need five votes to pass this emergency language. If every, if anybody here has a thought in their mind that they can't support this, then just speak now. There's no sense even in legislation.
I'm perfectly fine with that. I I don't, you know, this is a, this is a fence jumper here. I I don't have a problem either way. I'm, you know, for for me personally, you see where I stand. But again, I'm I'm here to work with all of you for the what's in the best interest of the city. And if someone's not comfortable, I am perfectly fine with that. That's my, I don't, I don't need five minutes. Let's just do it. We're in an open meeting. There there's no, you know, everything's go.
You know my thoughts?
I was a, I was a a yes, then I was a no, but it's it's nice to discuss this because now I'm a yes. I mean, we gotta do something. We just can't sit and do nothing. I mean.
Sitting and doing nothing could cost us way more. It could cost us the same, but either way, it's doubling at least our cost of street repair, paving, whatever we wanna call it next year.
And fortunately, it's not like we're talking millions.
I mean, we're gonna have more, and that's where I was showing with those streets.
But we have the time to segregate and do it now with such a bigger project and then spend our time on other street repair and paving next year, not be caught in this project.
This would be one of the only couple streets that I would feel comfortable with doing.
Yes.
But I think the costs are too high. But that's why I brought it to council to say, look, guys, here's my opinion of it. Give me some feedback.
The costs are too high. The cost of everything is too high.
Yes.
I don't expect it to be different today or tomorrow, or, you know, in my general, I'm just saying, in day-to-day, cost of everything is too high.
Yes.
It is a matter what it is. So I don't expect this to be any different. It it's too high. I agree with you. It is. But something needs done. And if we're planning for next year, time coordinating, your money financially, all of that stuff, it doesn't not make, it doesn't, it it doesn't not make sense to do it now and and allow us time, money, what what have you for projects, paving, whatever we wanna call it next year.
Like I said, the last meeting, out of all the streets in the city, those are the only two that I would feel comfortable that we're not gonna have major water lines that we're gonna have to dig up in a couple of years. So, but.
There there just has to be a commitment. The the residents of the city, they have to be, we have to reassure them that we're committed to paving all over the city.
And we mistakenly have. And then we've got this money where we got, and and that doesn't make it any easier for them to swallow because I know the streets, I know the roads are bad, the alleys are bad. I've talked to people that I'm telling them we're gonna pave their alleys this year, and then we get this money for the for the infrastructure and the water. And now it's horrible. It's a horrible letdown to have to tell people that. I I mean, it is a gain.
Well, here here's, I agree with you 100% on all the issues, but here, and I said it at the last meeting. The the issue we have is paving above ground, everybody sees it.
Yes.
Okay, it's cosmetic. We drive on it. We can touch it. We play on it. We walk on it, et cetera. Nobody, nobody, there's no resident here unless you're in the business or you're on city council that can fully appreciate the cost of a water line, okay? All the residents, and and again, this is not disparaging comments about our residents. This is just the reality of it. You only recognize when you turn the faucet on and the water comes out. There's a cost to maintaining that line. There's a cost to repairing that line. There's a cost to replace that line. We have been, thanks to everyone involved last year, whoever, we have been blessed with a grant of $5 million. And we have to take advantage of that. That's why I have no issue telling my constituents that we've got to replace these water lines because safe drinking water is more important than a paved street when it comes down to it. And but with that said, when it's all said and done, we have to reassure our residents that we're fully committed to get back to a regular yearly paving, you know, projects with as much money as we can throw from the budget. So, you know, I I think at this point, that's why I'm comfortable with it. Because when you're talking about paving streets that can be held off, we're still, we're still going out patching. Those trenches will be there. They won't be the greatest, but they'll be okay.
It'll get through and we'll have to, we'll have to come back and paint those streets, too.
I understand. Those will need looked at. Yeah, I understand. But when it comes to rebuilding a street, that's a completely different concept. And I I understand that there'll be some residents that are gonna say, well, you guys are just taking care of people on Edinburgh. Well, that's true, but their street.
But there's a reason.
Yeah, there, yeah, but their street was not properly installed. For whatever reason, the city accepted it, and that's 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 the past. The city accepted it and and, you know, hopefully, as we go forward, if we have the blessing of a new subdivision or a new street, you know, we can be a little, you know, stronger on Jeremy. You get, you get all this.
Already. It's already in the.
Right, you just change, you know, so that this doesn't happen again. But we also, if the people on South Sugar say, well, what about our street? Well, that's a street we have to look at, you know?
And and another random element, who knows? They keep saying more monies coming down. We may get more money. They do have the plan, and they put the big picture plan together, which I think will give us a better shot at getting other monies coming in, grants. We don't know yet what may be coming, but I suspect there will be, but.
I mean, for just, we've still got, what is it, round three of the COVID relief money? 269 that we were supposed to have a year and a half ago.
It's still not there.
We still don't have it yet. We've got a oil and gas lease that's out that that we're gonna have money, so we're gonna have some money. It's just, I wanna make sure we spend it correctly and wisely, because I've already sent a directive out to all my superintendents. I want every one of the sewer lines that crosses the street, I want every culvert checked. I want them all camera to make sure that we don't have a problem. So when we do paint these streets, we're not tearing them back up right away. So, you know, we're working on getting the camera out and going through some of them and going, you know, but it's gonna, it's gonna take a while. And and if we're, you know, for lack of a better, lack of a better term, we're gonna be like Wheeling. I mean, look at downtown Wheeling right now. That is what we're gonna be in the next year or so. I mean, we are gonna tear the crap out of a ton of streets.
With brand-new water lines. I have no issue with that at all. I'm ready to proceed. I I've talked too much to begin with. I'll listen to anybody else. I'm ready to proceed with the legislation. So, okay, at this point.
I'm not comfortable. I'm, we're being rushed. We gave them an open checkbook. We gotta like, dude, that's a lot of money.
It's a lot of work, though. It's a long street, too.
It is a lot of work, but that's a lot of money. And we're throwing stuff together, and I just, I cannot justify. Now, if it was two streets, Kilsoth, like you said in the beginning, I'm all for it, but one street, I can't, I can't justify it.
Okay, this is basically what we what we need to know. It's this is a discussion on what council wants to do to proceed with this project or not to. If council's on board with proceeding, because it does, to pass it this evening, it takes everybody. So if there's somebody here that's not on board with it, then we won't even bother going into legislation because they're trying to pass anyway. So everybody kinda think for a minute, if you're not on board with it, then there's sense even reading.
He's not. I mean, I I respect everyone's opinion. I, that's perfectly fine. If he's not comfortable, he's not comfortable. I mean, I respectfully disagree. Um, I I, you know, the 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 issue beyond, I I agreed, I agree with his, I see his rationale about it, okay? But the unique circumstances as such, I'm not in a position to, I have no expertise on the cost of rebuilding that street. I can't determine if this is a good number or not. I understand you're both think it's high. I I respect that. You know more than I do when it comes to that. On the other hand, I if I'll be, I will be shocked if next year or the year after, it's lower than that amount right now. I'll be shocked. And that's why, that's one reason why I'm for doing it. I just don't think it's gonna come down. That's just my opinion.
That and a lawsuit, maybe.
Well, and the whole, yeah, I I feel as to the, as potential litigation, you you know, we have some good points. They have some points. Um, I I would hope that if the company would want to continue to work, that we could have some amicable resolution. Look, we don't have a choice. If they're the lowest bid on future projects, we can't say, well, you know, you, this other thing, we have to accept them. I think that they would understand the circumstances as we understand the circumstances, but that variable is a roll of the dice, and that's that's a, that's an issue. That's why, that's, if I'm classifying my factors to go forward, that is one of them, to avoid potential litigation. Because I would absolutely abhor seeing us, whether it's through our insurance company or us directly, paying any amounts of money to anyone, including lawyers. And that's, that's an unknown.
It is, but we could get sued every day.
I'd like to ask the mayor how how you feel about it.
Well, I've sat in a lot of these meetings with him, and I know it it is a catch 22. It's a real conundrum because you're right. It's a lot of money for one street, and it's like, what, 10 houses? But I also think that, you know, I've I've been in a position, I've got a little bit of rental property, and when I've tried to jury-rig stuff and fix it, it always messes up, and you gotta do it right. And I agree with Mark, I agree with Jeremy. If you're gonna do it, we're gonna have to bite the bullet at some point and fix it. I mean, again, maybe shame on us for annexing that without checking that street. Is there any? Is there any part of it our guys can do? I mean, I think it's very special equipment and.
They've redone the base in several areas and put fabric down. It's just, I mean, the whole street, I mean, there's no doubt, the whole street needs it.
Yeah, it's a mess.
I mean, there, I mean, there's no absolute, no doubt about it, we have several horrible streets. All I'm saying is I want to make sure that we're not painting ourselves in a corner and doing something stupid with taxpayer money.
No, I agree, I mean, I just got the news, I got to put ten thousand dollars on a furnace and an air conditioner, so I feel the pain in one of my rental properties, but what else am I supposed to do? You've got to do what you've got to do, so.
If we do go through with it and totally rebuild this road, do we have an engineer that's going to be inspecting it as they do it, or do we have a superintendent? How do we do that?
I'll be out there.
Okay.
And my street and everything else. I can't say what was done before and how roads were, but that's the whole thing. And even, even with this water line project, I've already got guys that are going to be, that's, their job is to tail around with this contractor every day and give reports. They're going to have daily reports and go through.
And I can tell you, he will, because when they put that temporary water line in, and it was right behind my house, I was down there about twenty-five times that night, he was there all night. I mean, he, it's like his own baby, and I laid down on the street with my hose, trying to open a capture about two AM, and no, he was there all night.
I was wondering if there was just like a spring or something under there, will the paving company care about that?
We'll be there to watch, and that's why, if you notice, the amount wasn't for two thirty-six, it was for two fifty, to give us a little fluff in case. Now, my hope is they get in there and we're not going to need the base in a couple of swats where we already put some in. But it's one of those things, it's like, you know, I always go with a renovation ceiling. Most of the time, it's not worth the contractor's effort to stop, move and go through it. If they're replacing the ceiling, they're tearing it all down, putting a new one up, it's cheaper for them to do that.
We're going to do it, we're going to do it right.
So, that's kind of the back and forth with it, but we will be watching that, that, that's one of the things I want to make sure of with all of this stuff.
Hopefully, they'll be in their two thirty-six, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, who do you think they can?
Yes, and that's, and that's also a possibility, too. They could get in there, and we could find some spots where we don't have to go down as much, and they're not going to have to put in as much stone. That's definitely a possibility, but there's also the possibility the other way, too, that there's a soft spot, like you said, a spring, and we've got to put some under drains in and do some other things. But that's where we'll come in with our guys, and I'll say, okay, we're going to do this to get out of your way, to get it, and just keep going.
Do they have a timeline on it?
I mean, is the completion, everything, I think it was a week or a week and a half.
Really, that's quick.
I mean, they're going to come in with the milling machine, they're not, they're not even going to excavate it, they're going to mill out all of the base, they're just going to come through.
Excuse me, what does that mean?
It's, if you've ever seen them pave, what they have is a big machine that has these little teeth on it, and what it does is it just grinds everything. They're just going to take that machine, instead of just taking the asphalt off, they're going to go down and take the entire dirt in the base and everything, and just put it in a truck and take it.
Okay, I see what you're saying, thank you.
So.
The question, the question becomes, Elizabeth, J.C.'s a no, and that's fine. Again, the question becomes now, we have an ordinance from last year that approved, and then we signed a contract. The question is, that I have, is do we, do we need to take action on this twenty-five and read it? And then it dies for a lack, or I'm just trying to think, how do we, do we need, we're sitting here informally
Right.
saying that we're not going to do this.
I mean, it'll die, and then.
But I guess what I'm, yeah, do we need a formal action of reading the legislation? And I'm not, now, we got twenty-four, we got, before we had twenty-five.
Right, yeah, and that's.
We don't need to do twenty-four if we're not going to do twenty-five.
Yes, correct. There's no sense in doing that.
Do we need to do twenty-five?
I mean, theoretically, we could do twenty-four, and it would just be.
That'd be a first read.
In the budget, it, well, it could be a first read, or it could be put in the budget of the street department, and then when we don't use it, it just goes to cash carryover.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just thinking.
But.
That, that we have to, I don't know.
We do the read, and then we ask for somebody to do it as emergency legislation.
We need to have some formal action.
And if it dies, then we have the first read.
Okay, all right, so we need to.
We do the first read.
We need to proceed then with twenty-four.
And then, I mean, here's the other thing that I said, too, that section of South Marietta, that would be something that we could do, I don't know when we would be in the contract or in the queue to do it.
Well, quite frankly, as far as I'm concerned, if it could get done this year, it's better than nothing. You know what I mean, even if it's in October, you know, at the end of the year.
And that could be, and by that time, I'm going to know, because we're going to have that project out the bit, so I know what's going to happen with that. So that could be something to where we change it, and I just tell the contractor, look, you're not starting the thirteenth, put us in the queue for this one, we've changed it, we've changed our mind, we're not doing this, we're still going to do this, but. So, I mean, there's the potential with that, too. But, you know, that's why I'm talking to you guys about it.
Is there any chance, if they start on this water line this summer, like, there's a possibility, correct?
Yeah, it's going to be push and fall, it'll be fall.
So there would be no chance of them finishing an area that could be paved?
No, I highly doubt it. I mean, they're supposedly going to be able to work through winter, and, I mean, just like we ran into last year, we could have warm weather all the way up until January, and they could be making, or we could have a cold spell in October, and they just say, we're done.
But there would be a chance that they could start paving in April?
Yes.
Streets that are finished?
Yes. Now, I would suggest waiting a little bit on that, just because of. Think about how we're tearing, we're tearing up sections and we're coming back in, I want to make sure those don't settle before we put another one on. Because most of that, we're going to be able to come in, instead of doing the whole replacement, some of the streets, we're going to have to, South Sugar is a prime example, we're going to have to replace the base there. But some of these other ones, we can just come in and do the topping, do an inch and a half of pavement, and then it'll be fine. But until we make sure that those where those water lines don't settle, I mean, it's the same thing, it's a flip of the coin.
Most likely, and all of South Sugar coming down the hill will need rebuild.
More than likely, it's going to have to be, I mean, even after we get the water line in, because it's been tore up and everything so far.
So then that means we're going to have two rebuilds next year, then, Edinburgh and South Sugar.
Potentially, I mean, but that's the part of the issue, I can't guarantee that South Sugar is going to be part of the first one done. That's going to be up to the contractor. And that's where I'm hesitant about wanting to get that project out in the open yet, to show people, look, we're going to be doing this street, this street, this street, because I don't have a contractor on board yet to tell me means and methods, I want to start here, or whether the fact that it's going to be a small contractor with a group of five people that just worked their way across, or it's going to be a large contractor with thirty guys, and they're going to be in six different squads at one time, and just blow everything up.
I'm just afraid if we have two rebuilds to do, then we're not going to have money to do other paving.
And that's something that we have to look at, go through and see which streets.
Maybe this year, it wouldn't be as bad next year, so.
Potential.
Catch twenty-two all the way around.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm willing to trade jobs with anybody if they want to.
All right, Elizabeth, you want to address this legislation, and we'll go with first readings, and we'll see if anybody wants to do anything with it from there.
Okay, the first one up is ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four, and that's the ordinance to make inter-fund transfers and reallocations within the funds for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period January one, two thousand twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and declaring an emergency, and that's transferring the two hundred thousand dollars from the general fund into the street. So it's a transfer out and transfer in.
And that could be transferred back later.
It could just cash flow over.
Yeah, it allows the expenditures.
Yes.
Jacob, do you want to read ordinance twenty twenty-two twenty-four, please?
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two twenty-four, an ordinance to make inter-fund transfers and reallocations within the funds for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period January first, two thousand twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that is the first reading of twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four. Does anybody want to take any further action on that ordinance? Okay, that's the first reading on that, we'll move on to the second one.
Okay, the second one up is ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five. That's an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-nine and authorizing an expenditure not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the calendar year two thousand twenty-one to be completed in the calendar year two thousand twenty-two and declaring an emergency.
Okay, Jacob, would you like to read twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five, please?
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two twenty-five, an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty-one twenty-nine and authorizing an expenditure not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the calendar year two thousand twenty-one to be completed in calendar year two thousand twenty-two and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that is the first reading on twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five. Does anybody wish to take any further action on that ordinance?
I'll move that the rules requiring ordinance and resolutions to be read of three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Here do I have a second. Okay, we will take a roll call vote to decide whether or not this legislation will be considered emergency.
Butler?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thresh?
No.
Vincenzo?
Yes.
Four in favor, one against.
Okay, we have the four and one, does not consider emergency legislation, because it takes a minimum of five. So that, at this point, that will just barely be the first reading. So that's all we have on the agenda this evening, and the motion's adjourned.
So moved.
The adjourn, thank everybody for coming in this evening.
Thank you.